I'd like to recognize the mayor. He can start with his proclamation today.
Thank you. Have a brief couple of comments. It's a certificate of appreciation. It says, "Be known that the City of Kenner hereby recognizes Robert Bob Ross for his dedication, commitment, and quality public service to the City of Kenner over the last ten years." So Bob's last day working is today. He decided he had enough of us. And he's ignoring me now. Look, this has been going on for the last ten years. He didn't want me to get up here and give this to him. So we're gonna have a new photographer at these council meetings. So Bob is retiring from us and taking a part-time job doing the same stuff he's been doing at home. What's that, baking and stuff like that? Yes, yes. No, but thank you. Bob and I have a wonderful relationship with dry humor throughout the years. So I'm supposed to call you something?
Bill Roth.
Bill Roth. Supposed to call you Bill Roth. And Councilwoman McKenney would like to thank you for the years of painting happy trees and all that kind of stuff. So... So that's the wrong person. So I'm sure you want to say something. The man would... Come on. You know I was gonna put you on the spot. Yeah, say something. At least thank the council people, something like that.
I want to thank everyone. Thank the council. Thank the mayor. I want to thank everyone for allowing me to continue with this administration. And I'm just gonna need to check with Mike, get the keys to his truck so I can get it cleaned one last time. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to ask for any special intentions. Councilman LaHart?
Special intention prayers go out to Adham Abdalazis. He was a longtime worker at Galatas Playground with supervisor Johnny Bergeron. He unexpectedly passed away last week after being in the hospital with pneumonia. A young guy, he was very dedicated to his work and getting Galatas back on track. Pray for his family. Very longtime Kenner family. So keep him in your thoughts and prayers, please.
Okay, thank you. I would like, if everyone could stand, and I'd like to invite Pastor Tim Williams to lead us in the prayer.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this season of Thanksgiving, a time to reflect on what you've done for us and where you've brought us from. Father, we thank you for the storms you've brought us through. Thank you for the provisions you've made in our life. And thank you for the gift of life. May we live every day in light of just how precious it is to be alive. And Father, I pray for our leaders today. I pray that you would give them wisdom and help them to act with integrity and compassion in everything that they do. And we pray blessings on them as they take on this significant task. And Father, may your face shine upon us. May your countenance show us the way. And may you give us peace in everything we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to ask Councilman Swarth to lead us in the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, please cover your hearts and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chairman, you have a quorum. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting.
Madam Chairman, I've received a request to change the order of business to take Item 18A at the beginning of the meeting.
Motion by Councilwoman McKenney, seconded by Councilwoman Brennan, to change the order of business. Council... Yes. Okay. We're actually gonna move to 18B instead. And we'll go back to 18A. So motion by Councilwoman McKenney, seconded by Councilwoman Wilmot to change the order of business to take 18B at the beginning of the meeting. Councilmembers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes, seven zero. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to adjourn into executive session. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes, seven zero. We are now in executive session and will return shortly. Let me... Wait. Madam Chairman, if I could read it into the record, please, before we adjourn?
Yes.
Item 18B, at the request of the legal department, an executive session regarding Item 1, Corey Virgil versus John Q. Semenano III, Kenner Police Department at all, 24th JDC, 815-801 Division E. Item 2 is Maria Di La Torre versus Alex D.K., Kenner Police Department at all, 24th JDC, 796-010 Division O. Item 3 is Lucy Benitez at all versus the City of Kenner, 24th JDC, 820-509 Division J.
Thank you. We'll be in session in ten minutes.
...
I agree. This is executive, um... So, on my agenda, I'm gonna write a note. Eighteen D was taken first.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order.
Yes, ma'am. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to reconvene from executive session. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, authorized in the City Attorney's Office to settle the matter of Corey Virgil versus John Cusmano III, Kenner Police Department, at all, twenty-fourth JDC, eight fifteen dash eight oh one, Division E. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion passes seven zero. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by, I mean, motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, authorized in the City Attorney's Office to settle the matter of Maria Di La Torre versus Alex DK, Kenner Police Department, at all, twenty-fourth JDC, seven nine six dash zero one zero, Division O. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, authorized in the City Attorney's Office to settle the matter of Lucy Benitez, at all, versus the City of Kenner, twenty-fourth JDC, eight twenty dash five oh nine, Division J. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Madam Chairman, I have a request to change the order of business to take item eighteen A at the beginning of the meeting. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes seven zero. Item eighteen A, at the request of Councilmember McKenney, a PowerPoint presentation given by Jefferson Parish, Councilmember Dominic Empistado.
Thank you. Councilmember Empistado?
Thank you, Council, Council President and members of the council, Mayor Glazer and Keith Conley, albeit absent, Chief of Police. We appreciate the invitation to be here. With me is Councilman-at-Large, Templet as well, Ricky Templet, who's here. What brought this on is, and Mayor Glazer touched on some of this in his State of the City earlier in the week, many people in the city of Kenner don't realize or often forget that they're represented both at the local city of Kenner level, but also at the parish level. And I have the privilege of representing the majority of the city of Kenner at the Jefferson Parish level. Councilman Byron Lee represents about thirty percent of the city of Kenner as well, but between he and I, we are the representation, in addition to the at-large council members, Councilman Templet, who's here today with us, who represents the city as well. What we've done in the last four years is put together somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred million dollars' worth of work that is coming into the city of Kenner. And what we wanted to do is make sure, A, that our council members, the mayor, and I know the mayor is intimately involved in this as is Chief Conley, but I wanted to make sure that each of the seven of you council members were apprised and understand what we're doing. Some of you were involved in it in the past administrations, some are new to the council, some may not entirely be aware. But in addition to our city of Kenner residents and constituents who watch these meetings and pay attention and are starting to see the shovels in the ground, starting to see bulldozers in construction sites and wondering, what is this? Why is this happening? And we're very fortunate that for the first time in recent history, certainly in the last probably twenty-plus years, we have more dollars coming from Jefferson Parish into the city of Kenner than in our history. And I'm very proud to say that we took an aggressive stance on that. It was something we committed to when we ran, and I think the city of Kenner at the end of the day is gonna be better for it. We'd like to take a few minutes and just show you where things are going, answer any questions, make sure all of our council members understand what's going on, and if you have any concerns about those things, we can address those. What you're going to see is we are touching all five Kenner districts in some way and making a positive impact. The first item I want to talk about, we did a groundbreaking about a week ago at the Kenner Boat Launch. This is, and Councilman Templet's here in particular, if you'll join me, Councilman, and this is very much the result of an initiative that he started. Councilman Templet came to me a few years ago and said, "We have an opportunity to bond out what's called GO Mesa funding." It's a federal program, basically money paid by the oil companies, oil royalties and whatnot, for their drilling offshore. It's a stream of revenues that's really uncertain, but his team and his then District One office came up, designed an opportunity for the parish to bond out that money and create about twenty-three million dollars of immediate funds to use in the parish for hurricane and other disaster-related protection. Councilman Templet came to our office and said, "We'd like to do this in District One. Is there, is there a need in District Four, particularly on the lakefront, that can be served by some of those funds as well?" And we did have a need. In particular, one of the needs we have, we had, was a few years ago, we learned, unfortunately, when there was an explosion on our, off of our Williams Boulevard boat launch, and rescue vessels from our Kenner Police Department and Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office and Fire Department had difficulty basically mounting their rescue through the Williams Boulevard boat launch, because the boat launch was in a state of absolute disrepair, had been silted in, needed to be dredged, so we saw an absolute impediment to saving lives and to keeping our citizens safe by the condition of that area. So what we did is we hired engineers and whatnot to design a complete overhaul of that boat launch and to design rock jetty protection that will create breakwaters to prevent that, that soil from silting in at the boat launch again. The way we did it was we were able to combine funding from multiple different sources, from the local, the local level of Jefferson Parish of about two-point-three million dollars, another roughly one-and-a-half million dollars from CPRA at the state level. And I'm gonna say again, Councilman Templet and his office literally went to Baton Rouge multiple times to, to use their relationships that they had at CPRA to help leverage those dollars to come into the city of Kenner. In addition, at the end of the day, once we bid out the project, it was about, I think, eight-hundred thousand dollars short, if my memory serves, but it was short. And we then approached Mayor Glazer, Councilman Joey Lahattin, District Three, and said, "Guys, can you help make up some of the difference for increased, the increased cost of construction?" So, through a partnership at the parish, state, and local level in the city of Kenner, we now have broken ground. You will see, if you go to the Williams Boulevard boat launch, we will see within the next nine months that boat launch completely overhauled to be the envy of our peers and certainly an elite, wonderful place for our residents, not just on the recreational side, but on the commercial side. People whose livelihood depends on being able to launch their boats in and out of that, that launch. And of course, last but certainly most important, our first responders' ability to respond to emergencies at that boat launch. In addition, so that, that is expected to be done roughly in August of twenty-twenty-three, so the next nine to ten months, unfortunately, we will have lack of use of that boat launch during that time, but it's all for the greater good and will solve what I think many of us believed was one of the hottest, most difficult topics in the city of Kenner, was the condition of that boat launch. That will be solved within the next year, and you will see the construction, it has started. They are mobilized, they are on-site doing the work. The second phase of that is the rock jetty hurricane protection. That's a four-point, four-point-one million dollar project. Some of that funding is secured. I mentioned the one-point-five million from the state and CPRA that Councilman Templet helped us get. That's there, but it's not the complete project. So we are now aggressively seeking other grant opportunities to make up that whole four-point-one million dollars, so we can then have the rock jetty, jetty part of it done, and that will be done in phases. This is sort of an overview of what the long-term project will be. In addition, what I didn't mention is as the, as the mud is, as the soil is dredged and the mud is taken from the boat launch, it will be used to recreate marsh along the sides of the lakes. So we'll see additional marsh creation, additional land created, which provides additional hurricane protection, additional protection from wave action in the long term. So you're gonna see a much bigger area out in Lake Town when we're done with it. Next, and this is something that obviously we have the flyover that is, is moving at, certainly in government terms, lightning speed. That is something, we lobbied the legislature, excuse me, we lobbied Congress. I spent literally weeks in Washington DC fighting for the funding for this, and we're proud to say, and everyone has seen that construction, roughly a hundred-and-twenty-six million dollars that is being spent and will be completed for the flyover at Loyola for the new airport. But there are two, I call them piggyback projects, that are regional transportation projects being funded a hundred percent by Jefferson Parish that are connected to the airport construction as well. One of those is Councilman Sharworth, District Two, the extension of West Napoleon. What we have done is we are in design on a project that will take West Napoleon where it now dead-ends at Williams Boulevard, and it will cut straight through and connect into Airport Road. That will, that's twelve million dollars we've set aside at the parish for that project. What that will do is create another east-west thoroughfare in Jefferson Parish that will run from the airport all the way through almost to Bonneville. So, I mean, we know what happened on West Napoleon when it was opened up years ago under the leadership of then Public Works Director at the parish, Jose Gonzalez, and that changed the face of, of West Napoleon and those neighborhoods on each side forever. This is a very short area, but the ability to open up West Napoleon and connect will change that neighborhood, but additionally relieve traffic off of Williams Boulevard, relieve and provide additional access in and out of the airport, both on the commercial and passenger side. I will tell you, the holdup we have at this point, it is in design, is at the Aviation Authority. The Avia, the FAA has to approve that project because it involves cutting into Airport Road. They want this to coincide or coordinate with their master plan, and we're, admittedly, we're having a little bit of difficulty, but I know the mayor has appointee, an appointee on the aviation board who we are working with to try and help lobby on that end of it, but that is certainly a big project that we think can help change the city of Kenner for the better. In addition, a much lesser visible, perhaps more important project, from a, from a production and efficiency standpoint in District One, is the Bainbridge redevelopment. Bainbridge, for years, has been almost a condemned street. That, that, unfortunately, that street has been in danger of collapsing into the canal for quite a number of years. Due to the increased traffic in and out of the airport, particularly on the commercial side, the rental shuttles, the shuttles, commercial traffic in and out, the additional pressure on that street was identified by us as a hazard more than five years ago before this started. What the parish is doing, we are appropriating twenty-one million dollars and have additional state funding on the way for the remainder. What you will see in Bain, Bainbridge, the streets completely redeveloped, the canals covered and complete drainage fixed, but most importantly, the shoring up of those streets and the sidewalls of the canal, so they will no longer be in danger of collapse. And that will provide an additional thoroughfare in and out of the airport, again, to enhance regional transportation. On Vintage, in District Three, the vintage bike trail, that project is underway and finally is getting a little bit hot and heavy. What we're doing is creating a bike and pedestrian walking trail that will extend from Power Boulevard to the Wilson Canal, which will tie in incredibly with what is already on Power, and in addition, with what you council members and the mayor resurrected from its dormancy, the extension from Vintage to the lake. So this will dovetail very well within that. The funding has been approved, the RPC is paying for the majority of it. Two-thirds of it will, will be paid by the RPC with a match from the city of Kenner and Jefferson Parish together. And that runs again predominantly in District Three, in the city of Kenner. DOT TD is providing payment. We're expecting this to be bid out and construction started in the early part of this coming year. So again, that's gonna be shovels in the ground, we're gonna see construction happening. It will have lighting, landscaping that runs all along Vintage, so that should be an excellent project for them. That's an overview of where, where we're looking at and where it will run from Power to Wilson. This, this is not one that gets a whole lot of praise and accolades, but it'll certainly, anyone who lives in the Seton Park, Woodlake, Southlake area in, in District Five knows the need we have there. Back eight, August fifth of twenty-seventeen, which was the infamous day that the New Orleans Sewerage and Water Board had its colossal collapse. On that same very day, this area of North Kenner had the highest amount of flooding that had been recorded in decades. Water, while it did not get inside the houses, got above the curves and frankly scared all of the residents there as to what was forthcoming. We were able to work with an engineering firm who came up with a solution, and I'm proud to say that engineering firm, MSMM, is a Kenner, is our Kenner residents. They live, and the, and the man who designed it lives in the very area that's affected by this. What we're gonna have is a pumping station that is going to be built between Seton Park and Woodlake subdivisions that will pump water to relieve all, any sort of flooding from basically Vintage through North Kenner, and will actually assist through Plas Pantra Train and even to some degree Chateau Lakefront. But basically, all of North Kenner will now have a pumping station to pull water out of there and prevent the risk of future flooding. We have to compliment and thank Senator Kurt Talbot and, most importantly, State Representative Debbie Vilio, because they went and secured the funding at the state, which is roughly twelve million dollars, and they got the capital outlay money. I, I will tell you, State Representative Vilio voted against the governor on a couple of criminal justice issues that she believed were necessary to protect police, and she was threatened that the governor would veto these items for the city of Kenner, and yet she still pressed on, did what was right, and ultimately was able to go back and get the funding that we needed. So that project, we just awarded yesterday the complete design to MSMM and All South, which All South is actually an engineering firm of Kenner residents as well. So we've got local, we've definitely got local, local people working on this project, and this will provide flood control for the city of Kenner. In addition, the, the parish was able to get eighty-four million dollars of stimulus money through ARPA related to COVID-related issues. What ultimately happened at the parish is that money was allocated to a few different projects, one of which is we allocated, I believe, fifteen million dollars, Ricky? I think it was fifteen million to Zephyr Field or the Shrine on Airline, whatever you wanna call it, to rehab and redevelop that in partnership with the state of Louisiana and, and another organization, but... The state, the state committed ten million towards that effort, but to do that complete rehab is gonna take a compilation of things. Of the money that was left and another five million dollars, I think, was allocated to the Alario Center, if my memory serves. The remaining money was allocated amongst the districts. District Four, our district has twelve-point-four million dollars for stimulus-related needs of, of District Four. Some of that is gonna go into trying to upgrade infrastructure. We're actually spending some of that money to get wireless internet kiosks that provide mobile assistance to people, and we're gonna do that throughout District Four on both the Metairie and Kenner side. But perhaps most exciting is what we're gonna see is a transformation at Musburgerino Playground. We have approved, and I believe today, Councilman Brannigan, who represents District Four and Musburgerino Playground, has on the agenda the approval of a cooperative endeavor agreement whereby Jefferson Parish is allocating two million dollars to the city of Kenner to dump into Musburgerino Playground, which I'm proud to say, I'm either proud or disappointed, but proud in one way to say we're making history, disappointed that it took this long. but proud in one way to say we're making history, disappointed that it took this long. But that will be the largest, the largest investment into recreation in Kenner history. Other than the building of those parks, what we're doing is going to be historic in partnership with the city of Kenner. We will be on a mission, we will be kind of like the Blues Brothers, we'll be on a mission from God. We're actually going Tuesday, Councilman Branigan, Mayor Glazer, myself, the engineering firms who are working with us, principal engineering being one of them. And we're going to multiple facilities in the area, Chap Appeal being one of them. Actually, let me back up. Well, I'll show you Chap Appeal in a second, but we're going to a couple of local facilities, one on the North Shore, one in Hammond, to look at how they do things at some of their facilities and what can we do to potentially repurpose or reconfigure that facility to meet the modern needs of our kids and our families. Yes, that includes travel ball, but yes, that includes things other than travel ball too. What it is, is a way of redesigning and rehabbing this facility to make it state-of-the-art, to make it usable, to make it the envy of people around. And why Musburgerlino? It is the centerpiece of the city, it is dead center and it's the largest recreational footprint that we have. So it is where we can make a dramatic difference. This is an overlay, we're basically going to try and go back to the bare bones and see how would we reimagine it. Unfortunately, 2 million dollars doesn't solve every problem in the world, so we're going to be somewhat constrained by the funds we have, but we're certainly, at the parish and the city and this administration and the council are committed to thinking outside the box and looking for something bigger and better. This is state-of-the-art. This is actually where I will be in about six hours in Hoover, Alabama. This is one of the ways we're looking at possibly trying to reimagine that facility. If nothing else, what we can do is take that footprint and see how many fields can we put in that place to put as many kids as possible enjoying and celebrating recreation in the city of Kenner. So will this dream be a reality? I don't know if this one will, but some dream will be a reality out of this, this I promise you. And rest assured, when it comes to recreation, I, I have no doubt that Councilman Branigan will, will be as big of an advocate as there could be for such an effort. This is Chap Appeal, this is another neighboring site, we'll be there Tuesday to see what we can do and take from them. This is Kokil on the North Shore where we're going to be going Tuesday as well to see what we can learn from them and are there parts of that that we can take and incorporate into a new design. In addition, Jefferson Parish, we have, I call us the backup to the Kenner Police Department. Where the, where the Kenner Police has had needs, we're able to step up and provide funding for that. We've bought bulletproof vests for the department. We've bought, we've actually donated jet skis, again, to provide that water rescue and assistance for our first responders on the water. In addition, most recently, we are securing 100,000 dollars of District 4 funding that will be dedicated to, and, and if Chief Conley was here, I know he intended to talk about it and will more in the future, but what is, and perhaps some of his assistants would have more information than me, but basically approached us and said, we have a need for cameras to go inside the neighborhoods. It's a little more complicated than just crime cameras, but basically a recording and viewing system that would allow our Kenner Police Department to solve crimes and prevent crimes almost instantly. But unfortunately, technology like that takes money. We're going to provide 100,000 dollars of the 150,000 necessary to make that happen. So at the parish, oftentimes, we are the backup and we're happy to be that. In addition, we were able to provide pump trucks and vacuum trucks to the Public Works Department. One of the things that we do is where we have resources at the parish that are not getting the use they need, we've approached the city of Kenner, the administration said, what needs do you have? Do you have vehicle needs? Fire truck, I believe the fire department, we've provided a couple of pickup trucks as needed. So we have resources that if we don't need them at the parish, we're going to make sure that they come back here to the city of Kenner. Councilman Templet has been excellent at doing the same thing for Lafitte, Grand Isle and Gretna. That is a commitment that our council has to help the cities within its jurisdiction to make sure whatever needs you have, we're there to serve them as well. In addition, on that piggyback, we have, we have gotten into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Kenner to allow the parish's arborist, so where we have issues with tree trimming and whatnot on places like Roosevelt and whatnot, so our council member Sharwar doesn't have to risk his life or the public's life as he's cutting those trees down, we might be able to actually get the professionals to do it from now on. But, but yeah, I mean, it's, look, that's a small thing, but any dollar that we can provide at the parish with our taxpayers in the city of Kenner paying those taxes, that can help save the city of Kenner budget, that's what we're here to do. And last, perhaps lastly, what is still underway, unfortunately was dormant under the prior administration for reasons that I'd care not to explain or discuss, but around Kenner Discovery and Southlake with the increased traffic and the increased, let's say, attention in that area, one of the needs is sidewalks. We have, we have paid at the parish for the studies and the design for those sidewalks to be put into place and we're committed to making sure that ultimately those can be put in to allow those students and those families to be safe going to and from what is now, I believe, the biggest, certainly the biggest school in that part of the city of Kenner. Bonneville is technically partially in Kenner, so I think they're a little bit bigger, but certainly a Mecca, a wonderful partner, neighbor in the city of Kenner is Kenner Discovery and we want to make sure those families have what they need to, to be educated properly. In addition, Kenner Discovery in partnership with the parish has been able to make their home site, the, the Mecca turf, Laffernier soccer fields that, that we were able to design in District 4. Again, we were able, our office was able to make the largest investment into Laffernier Park in the park's history. With that recreated, the only two Astro turf soccer fields in the greater New Orleans area. We're proud to say that at the request of then Government Relations Representative Ms. Newton, who was then at Kenner Discovery, reached out to us and we partnered with Kenner Discovery to allow that to be their home, their home field. And so I'm glad that they've been able to enjoy that. With that, my, my time is, my time is done and I appreciate you bearing with me. We want to make sure, any questions you have, concerns you have, as these projects get underway, we're there to answer them. Feel free to point your constituents to us and, and we will certainly do whatever we can to address those issues. So if there's any, any concerns, any questions for either Councilman Templet or myself, Councilman Templet, do you have anything you want to add? All right. We're here to answer any questions if there are.
Councilman Brennan?
Thank you.
Council Chair. Councilman Impostado, Councilman Templet, thank you for the partnership we, we have that we enjoy, for all the contributions you make to the city of Kenner as well as Jefferson Parish. It, it's truly awesome to have the camaraderie we have on the Kenner Council and the relationship we have with the entire administration of Jefferson Parish and your friendship and efforts are greatly appreciated. So thank you both very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Branigan?
I just want to thank you guys for having the vision that you have. Obviously, I'm very happy about Musburgerlino. That, that place is very close to my heart. As Dominic knows, he was an umpire back in the day for baseball games for all of our kids that played at that park. So we're going to get this thing right. So I just want to thank you for, you know, finding, funding to be able to improve that facility and everything you're doing for the city of Kenner.
Thank you, Councilman. And what he didn't tell you is the reason I was an umpire back then is he, he brought me into Umpire the Games because I was the only 15-year-old in the city that was willing to throw all the adults off the park if they acted up. So, you know.
How many times did you throw him?
Never. No, because he was too busy shoveling and working the bulldozer than to coach the games, you know? But the truth is, in all seriousness, you know, this will be the largest investment into that park since George, Michelle Branigan, Pat Russo and company did into that park back in 1992, if my memory serves?
1994.
Close enough. So, I mean, in 30 some, 30 years, this will be the largest investment really into any Kenner park. So, I mean, that, that's, says something. They did it on their backs, we're now trying to do it on, I guess the federal government's back ultimately.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you. First off, I would like to thank you, Ms. Councilman Impostado and, and Councilman Templet. Thank you all very, very much. This is a very impressive presentation, of course, and, and to do the things that you, y'all have done is extremely welcomed and we appreciate it. I would like to say though, too, with regards to the flood efforts, Representative Stagney and Representative, Senator Smith have also obtained some funds for the city of Kenner for Lincoln and University and Audubon subdivisions. And that, that I think plays into all this as well because it's drainage and it's very, very important. Of course, all of our state legislative delegation, who is Talbot, Vilio, Stagney and Smith, were all extremely helping, helpful in getting state funds. And I think that's very important that, that all four of them receive some credit for that. Also, again, parish councilmen Dominic Impostado and Ricky Templet, thank you, thank you, thank you. This is a great, great concerns that we have and you're addressing them, job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And just to be clear, we reference, the only improvements we reference are those that the parish is, is funding and contributing funding to. So those other projects, which I am aware of, I only didn't reference because we really weren't a part of those, we're not, and on the drainage projects in North Kenner, the majority of the funding is coming from the state, but it was driven by our parish council and, and the funding in part is coming from us. That's the only reason I didn't reference those, but you're right. I mean, it's, it's all, all the legs of the stool working together to support the city for sure.
Thank you.
Councilman Lahat?
Dominic, thank you so much for being here, you too Ricky. You're correct, there's a lot of people in Kenner, the residents notice things that are happening, something we haven't had in a while. And it's just the, the positive feedback we're getting on people, people seeing things happen, seeing the, you know, well, they're happy to see the constructions, barriers going on David Drive, they're, they're happy about that, but.
Thanks for, thanks for that.
Look, we're very excited about everything you're, you're giving us and the funding and the, and the partnership, the cooperative endeavor agreements seems to always be beneficial. The food truck festival we had in Lake Town a couple of weeks ago, plenty of people from Orleans came over to that and they're just, people are hearing about the good stuff going on in our city, you know, in partnership with Jefferson Parish and I can't be more excited. I know we're all excited about it. Thank you for being here and thank you for the funding and, and the efforts.
Absolutely.
Councilman Swarth?
Dominic, Ricky, thank you so much. I know we've just become friends lately since I was elected here and I appreciate everything that you've all done for me. I'm glad to see that our state and local leaders are putting money into Kenner, I really do. People come in, why are we always paying taxes to Jefferson Parish? We live out here in Kenner. I said, well, now I can tell them why, absolutely. And thanking, Dominic, thank you for thinking about my life, safety, trimming trees, okay? Climbing the ladders makes really nothing to me, but it's a good thing because I was getting ready to resume that next month.
So I hear.
So I'm glad you got a professional to come in, so I don't have to get out there. But I do appreciate everything that the parish and the state has done for us. Thank you.
Sure. And to one of the comments you made, Councilman, I want to make sure, if you get an opportunity when your constituents talk about the taxation issue, and this has been something I've learned firsthand being on the parish council, a Kenner resident in all taxes, property taxes combined at the parish and the city pays less in total property taxes than a Metairie resident pays for fire protection alone. Think about that, okay? A Metairie resident pays for recreation in property tax roughly two-thirds of what we as Kenner residents pay in total property taxes, okay? That's a huge issue and when your constituents make comments like that to you, I'd ask you to remind them that the truth is, there's a benefit to living in the city of Kenner. We are way lower taxed than Metairie and unincorporated Jefferson residents. Now, the challenge is, it's tough for the seven of you, the mayor and the chief, because we have less money to deal with in the city of Kenner to pay for services, which is why this partnership is so important.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Dunn, Councilmember Dunn.
Thank you again, Dominic and Councilwoman Dominic and Templet for that Bainbridge Street, which I heard about, you know, about a month or so ago, I think from you. But thank you because that's a very important, because there's so much traffic going back and forth in there. I would like to see some of those dollars come into our recreational department also. I did see Councilman Byron Lee on, yesterday, and I told him that I will be having a meeting with him because we need some of these dollars also to trickle, you know, more into District 1. But I too want to thank you all for your effort and things that you have done for our district.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, and I just wanted to take time to also thank Councilman Impostado and Councilman Templet for coming here, spending the time, spending all your efforts to get that funding for the city of Kenner to really bring it into the 21st century, right? I mean, I think we were focusing on things, expanding, making Kenner a great place to live, obviously that's all what our focus is, but we can't do it without this partnership. And the success of this partnership is that we're all getting together and, and working and moving towards the future. I'm really excited about what's going on, going to happen at Musburgerlino, all the recreation offerings, those are, that's what makes Kenner different from other places and that's why people want to move into the city of Kenner. So thank you for those efforts, thank you for your vision because a lot of those projects were, you know, envisioned by both of you and in working coordination. So thank you for putting Kenner first and not that you're, you know, not focused on the other areas, because obviously Laffernier is a big deal, but thank you for making, making that effort and making it a priority. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
We will return to the regular agenda now. The next item on the agenda would be correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO or department heads.
Mayor Glazer?
Thank you, thank you. And thank you again, Dominic, thanks for coming, thanks Ricky. Wonderful weekend, happy Thanksgiving. All right, the numbers I got for citywide sales tax compared to last time, next, last year, they were up 30.09%, which relates to 871,688.55. For the current fiscal year, we are up 21.60%, which is 3,651,352.09 compared to the same time last year. Now, which Liz keeps telling me is, don't think we have over 3 million dollars to spend because it goes against some of the increases in budget and stuff like that, so. I'm happy to say that today is the last day that any city government's going to be in Macy's. Code enforcement's moving out this weekend, they will be in the Greenwalt Center, which is on the city hall campus at 1801 Williams Boulevard. We were able, a couple of meetings ago, y'all agreed on a lease that we went into with it. Took a little, a couple of weeks of cleaning and refurbishment, which I'll show you a couple of photographs of because I was impressed. I haven't been there yet, but this was sent to me yesterday, that's the outside of the building. It'll be clean, but we do have the new sign up and it's, there's like four or five, that's the inside of the hallways, the one in the middle is the first floor, the other two are the second floor hallway and just one large room, it has a, a wall that opens and closes so all our inspectors can work out of that large area upstairs. And this is pretty much, just want to show you what it looks like, it's going to, so that's starting, it'll be closed, I think you said, Monday and Tuesday, they're, they're not going to be operating at full staff because they'll be setting up their offices and all that kind of stuff. So they'll be up and running after Thanksgiving, break is over. Chief Morris wants to relay some information that Kenner is spearheading the, is it the largest Jefferson Parish Fire Academy where we have six fire recruits in, in the, of the 26 in this class, so we, we'll have six new firefighters in the upcoming months. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any comments? Councilman Wilmot?
I'd just like to thank the mayor for, for doing what he said he would do and, and not, I mean, fantastic getting this out of Macy's building, thank you very, very much. And, and it's, actually you're ahead of time because you said Thanksgiving, so we're, we're out of there and I think that's excellent. So we need to be in our own buildings. out of there, and I think that's excellent. So we need to be in our own buildings. So we appreciate you. Thank you.
And I guess I failed to mention that it's, it's due to the efforts of all the city employees. You know, they, they go overboard when we ask them to do something, so they get it done quickly.
Any additional comments? Councilman Branigan?
Mayor Glazer, we're, by being completely out of all of the, the bodies and departments out, do we have any other, you know, stuff that we have to get out of the Macy's building and put somewhere, or is that, or is that, is that done, too?
We've identified where we put it. It just hasn't been moved yet, so it'll be done, you know, in the upcoming weeks. So, yes. It's a lot of boxes, you know, thousands of boxes in furniture and stuff like that.
And do we have to go and take all those beautiful walls down, or?
The active sale for the mall, we were told, it was supposed to be in November. They pushed it back to next month. So we're going to ask them if we can leave them, leave them up, and they can tear them down, but I think they started removing them already.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Glazer. I think there's a lot for us to be thankful for this Thanksgiving, being thankful to be out of, to be out of the Macy's building is one, a huge one. So appreciate all the efforts of the city employees and the vision of the administration to do that, because I'm sure it wasn't a small feat. It took many months to set it up, so I'm sure it took many months to get it down, to get out and find other places. If only it was done eight months ago, but I digress. So thank you for all the employees.
Yes, ma'am. Under resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor, I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney, to add item 16-0, an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Parish of Jefferson for the enhancement of recreational facilities at Musburgerlino Park. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to object to this item being added to the agenda? Please come forward. Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Under the consent agenda, I have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of November 3rd, 2022. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. I have none. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2302-22, the city of Kenner to hold a public gathering on January 16, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the purpose of having a MLK parade slash march slash ceremony at the AP Clay Center at 200 Decatur Street in Kenner, Louisiana. And that will conclude the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings for final passage. Item 8A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,097, an ordinance approving a general advertising sign in the SI Special Industrial Zoning District for Pelican Outdoor Advertising Incorporated on a portion of Lot 8 and Lots 9 and 10 Square 208 Bainbridge Office and Industrial Subdivision in Kenner, Louisiana.
Motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, to defer this item for one meeting. Councilmembers all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of city, of removable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage, and we have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item 13A is a resolution call in a public hearing to determine whether the structures located at 231 Farah Avenue in Kenner, Louisiana, shall be abated by repair, rehabilitation, demolition, or removal.
A motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Lahat. Do we have any presentation on this?
This presentation will be done at the December 16th meeting. This is just calling your hearing.
Okay. Councilmembers all in favor, say aye.
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 Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 13B is a resolution accepting and adopting the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire from the Louisiana Auditor of the State of Louisiana for the fiscal year July 2nd, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Motion by Councilmember Lahat, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmembers all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion. Motion passes 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,098, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Bulldog EVT Service LLC to provide preventative maintenance and repair for fire vehicles in accordance with SEAL bid number 22-6692 in an amount not to exceed $250,000 annually for the Department of Fire.
Motion by Councilwoman Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Swarth. Second, councilmembers all in favor, say aye.
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 Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,099, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from H&amp;O Investments LLC to provide grass cutting in accordance with SEAL bid number 22-6697 in an amount not to exceed $383,832.73 annually for the Department of Field Services.
Motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance amending the 2021-2022 operating budget to budget police share of excess revenue, allocating it to the 2016-2017 capital budget for the police equipment, vehicles, and capital improvement account. Item 16B is an ordinance amending the 2021-2022 operating budget to comply with Louisiana Revised State Statute 39:13-10-1311. Item 16C is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and amendment number 4 to the fiscal year 2021 Annual Action Plan of the Home Investment Partnership for the Community Development Department. Item 16D is an ordinance authorizing a per diem allowance for the commissioners of the Kenner Housing Authority. Item 16E is an ordinance approving amendment number 8 to ASM Global, formerly known as SMG, for management services for the Punch Train Center Convention and Civic Center to extend the agreement through June 30th, 2023. Item 16F is an ordinance approving amendment number 2 to the agreement with HNTB Corporation dated December 5th, 2016 for Williams Boulevard Corridor Improvements, West Metairie Avenue to I-10, State Project Number H period 010570, Federal Aid Project Number H 010570, Kenner City, City of Kenner Project Number 2014-001F-CIP, adjusting the amounts of the supplemental services for the Department of Public Works. Item 16G is an ordinance approving change order number 6, final to the agreement with Jack B. Harper Electrical LLC, dated March 25th, 2021, for the installation of emergency vehicle preemption equipment along Loyola Drive for an increase of $911.70 and accepting the project as complete for the Department of Public Works. Item 16H is an ordinance approving an agreement with MSMM Engineering LLC to provide professional engineering services associated with 42nd and Lake Trail and 31st and Loyola Sewer Lift Station Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $72,048 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16I is an ordinance accepting an agreement with LB Technology Incorporated to supply GPS-only tracker equipment and service for city of Kenner vehicles on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $90,000 annually for the Department of Fleet Management. Item 16J is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with Jefferson Parish to fund the operation of the Kenner Loop Bus Service. Item 16K is an ordinance approving an agreement with consulting services with Conic and Associates LLC in an amount not to exceed $120,000 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16L is an ordinance authorizing a two-year agreement for the purchase of 55 camera license plate recognition system, including site and safety assessment camera setup, testing and freight from flock at safety, a sole source provider in the amount of $294,250 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16M is an ordinance authorizing utilization of City of Alexandria Contract Number 2381 with St. Martin Parish Acquisitions LLC doing businesses courtesy Ford to purchase vehicles on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $1 million for the life of the agreement for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16N is an ordinance approving amendment number 1 to the agreement with Crow and Associates Incorporated dated August 17, 2022, to provide ditch spraying services on an as-needed basis in accordance with RFP 226652 to increase the not-to-exceed amount by $20,000 annually for the Department of Field Services. Item 16O is a summary, is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Parish of Jefferson for the enhancement of recreational facilities at Musburgerlino Park. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
I just, I just want to say that I'm thankful for all of us being here today, and just wanted to mention that the Rivertown Christmas, or the Christmas for Kenner is going to be in Rivertown, so I'm looking forward to having our Christmas council meetings in the next time that we're here. So, thank you.
Item 18 is new business. We have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider or remove from the table position. We have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Morella, you have three minutes.
I want to respond to the comments made at here at the last meeting. I want to direct this response to Councilman Brennan, to Councilman Branigan. First of all, I want to say this. I'm not going to stoop to your level and engage in any kind of personal attacks. Instead, I'm going to respond this way. The issue at hand in conclusion was that a faction of this legislative branch portrayed themselves as a solution to a problem down here when in fact, they were the biggest part of that problem themselves. Now, on a broader note, I want to talk about our Veterans Day Ceremony on November the 9th. First of all, I want to express my appreciation to the citizens of Kenner who attended, the council, and fellow veterans. Also, Chief, the Chief was not there. I mean, he was there, I'm sorry. The Chief hosted the event. Council President McKenney recognized three members of Kenner VF Post, VFW Post 7732, and through proclamation. And it was a proud day for our post and for those members. Also, I want to give special thanks to our Recreation Department and to General Services. First and foremost, the workers who did the lifting, and everybody in the administration, everybody else who was involved in that, who made a first-class, a first-class ceremony, and made the veterans, our veterans of the city of Kenner very proud. And once again, I want to commend everybody for a job well done. Now, I also want to say this, 16D on the agenda with the Kenner Housing Authority, I go to those meetings, too, every month. We've been, we've been in discussions at that meeting over this, and it is, it is legal under state law. I got a copy of the statute, and to where the governing body has to agree to this. But I want to make sure that, because I asked a question several times, if they, they've been in negotiations with council members here, and I asked them if they talked to our city attorney, and at the time, they told me no. So what I want to say is, when this comes up for a vote, to make sure we have an ironclad provision in there, that if they're funding source, it's not going to be funded by the city of Kenner, that if they're funding source, for whatever reason, rise up, we not on the hook.
Thank you, Mr. Morella.
Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Nugent, thank you, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Nugent. I live at 5444 Earl Langer in District 3. First, I'd like to thank everyone who had a role in the food truck festival in Lake Town. It was a lot of fun and very well attended, more so than I think many of the vendors even anticipated. The issue I'm actually here to discuss is street lighting. This is a subject, a subject I've spoken on before, and though not as publicly, I've actually been working to bring attention to this issue for well over two years. Unfortunately, the nature of the last few years has been that of crisis. The combination of the pandemic and successive hurricanes has meant that all of the attention has been focused on addressing these devastating events. That's left very little time for other considerations such as community aesthetics. The aspect of street lighting I'd like to focus on today is simply light color. As a reminder, light color is measured in Kelvin. An incandescent light bulb emits light at 2,700 Kelvin. Bulbs branded as daylight emit light upwards of 5,000 Kelvin, and halogen, long considered the gold standard in attractive lighting, emits light around 3,000 Kelvin. This is not to be confused with the brightness of the bulb or fixture, which is indicated by the number of lumens. Prior to the era of LED streetlights, we were locked into a choice between the very orangey high-pressure sodium lights and the somewhat cold glow of metal highlights. This is no longer the case. As it happens, the perfect illustration presented itself to me yesterday. The Driftwood Park Civic Association had new landscaping and landscape lighting installed around their neighborhood entry sign. I stopped by last night after the work was finished to take a look, and I was very impressed with what I saw. The installation was carried out by a professional landscape design company, and a big part of the reason it looked so sharp at night is the 3,000 Kelvin lighting employed by the designers. This is as opposed to the 4,000 K lights that have been most commonly employed by the city. Councilman Lahat, imagine your entire neighborhood cast in the same beautiful light that now graces the front entrance. Now imagine that we could do this at no additional cost to the city. We're always looking for ways to set ourselves apart, to make Kenner the attractive choice for prospective residents, and this is, and this is what I would call a very easy opportunity. Better-looking streets, a better-looking city, and all it takes is checking, checking a different box on a spec sheet. I can cite case studies from Chicago to Phoenix. When this issue is properly examined, the result is almost universally the same. The public prefers streetlights in the range of 2,700 to 3,000 K, especially in residential areas. There are also a number of scientific reasons that make this the preferred option, and it's the option most likely to be endorsed by trained designers. I'm happy to engage further with the appropriate parties on this issue, and my question for this council is, when can we start to take action?
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Mr. Councilman Lahat?
Ryan, thanks for the pictures last night. It was, really, last night was the debut of it, and, and I should have said that earlier, the reports of the, the council districts, the programs to redo the front of the civic associations, you know, with the help of city funds is, is off to a great start, in mine at least. Driftwood, Christine Ross, Christine Herbert, who's the new president of Driftwood Civic Association, took off with it when we talked about it and did a great job coordinating it with the city. Planning the same thing at Beechey Heights, the Vista's, we're going to do the same thing out there. But I, I do like the lights, I agree. And I told you months ago, let, let us get into office for a while, let some things calm down, and, and I think it is time to start talking about that. So, yeah, I'm going to meet with you soon. I'm interested in 3,000 Kelvin type of lighting, because I mean, some streets in Driftwood have different lights all over the place. It's some of the orange ones, some of the bright ones, some, there's some LEDs, but I'm, I have watched everything you've sent me, but I think we're going to start talking about that soon. So I appreciate all the research you're doing. I appreciate you coming to the meetings, too. Takes a lot of time to do that, so.
I appreciate everything you guys are doing. I appreciate you, you reading into that stuff for me. I know it's a lot to take in, so thank you guys very much for listening, and, and I hope we can continue these conversations.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for attending, and I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving to all those attendants and all residents. Enjoy your food, family, and football. Motion to adjourn.